Folks, I know we're running just a couple of minutes behind, but we will get started shortly. Lorna.
Caller number.
Caller number. If you got a chance. We're just trying to find out what's true to you. Folks, we'll get started in just a minute. We've got a council member stuck. She's trying to get here. As soon as she gets here, we'll start. Well, while we're waiting before we start everything official here, my giggle box that is sitting to the right of me, today is his birthday! All I'm gonna say, so I don't get in trouble, is he's... Looks good for 21 with many years of experience. But yes, today is Mr. Tucker's birthday. Happy birthday, Dan. So if we can keep this short and sweet tonight, I'm sure his wife would like to go do birthday things with him. Hey, 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 hey! Bring the conversation up. Yes. So what does everybody think of this crazy Texas weather? Up-down, up-down, up-down. Hot-cold, hot-cold, rain, no rain. Nice pollen blowing around. Alright, folks. Time is 6:34. We'll call this meeting to order. First thing, Mr. Tucker, would you lead us in the indication?
With our heads. Dear Heavenly Father, you come together today to do your will. In what Jehovah says we make decisions for our community. Thank you through your divine wisdom that guides us every day. You pray this in thy name.
Ms. Lorna, would you like to lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to your republic on which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Honored in Texas's flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, united, one and indivisible.
I was hoping somebody was gonna say that. Sometimes it's hit and miss somebody saying that. I love it when people do that. Alright. The next thing is what I say in every meeting. Rules that decorum matter effect. If you haven't been to a meeting before, it's basically, please act like adults and treat others with respect when they're speaking. That's all we ask for. Alright, next up is citizens' comments. Ms. Bev, you're the first one up. It's on. It just sounds like... There you go. It just sounds like the volume's real low on it. You'll have to... I mean, literally, it's like you're speaking, like you're having a singer.
Get really close to it?
There you go.
Okay. Okay, my name is Bev Stevenson. I live at 279 Partridge Drive in McLendon Chisholm. I am here tonight to speak on item 6.5, Citywide Solid Waste and Recycling Outside Procurement Request. This item confuses me. Why in the world would our city spend $30,000 to issue an RFP and get new proposals for this service? Prosper, who is noted in the staff report, has over 30,000 residents. Might make sense for them to use it. They're six times our size. Maybe it's needed for them, but it's not needed for us. I was part of the council that hired the initial trash service for the city. Cost me an election, but I did it. I'm proud of it. I know Ms. Balkum was part of the process in contracting the CWD. I'd be very happy to assist in reviewing proposals that come back for a new service. And if I'm misreading this, and it's not gonna cost $30,000 for somebody to get us a new trash service, I apologize, but I think staff is more than capable of doing this for you. Thank you.
Thank you, Bev. David, where you at? You're up next.
Hello? Hello?
You'll have... Literally have to hold it up like you're singing. It's that sensitive.
Name's David Black. I'm at 1419 C O O. Okay, um...
You can pull it off if there's any. There you go.
Hello?
There you go.
Uh, 6.4. It's a minor thing. The update on the citywide maps. Uh, it's... Just my understanding, you're gonna modify the comprehensive plan to reflect the latest status of annexations and zoning. And I was just wondering if there's anything else that's gonna happen on that. And that was it. 6.6. Uh, consider the process for this... Our city to become home rule charter as opposed to Texas local governing law. It's not required... You know, we've met the threshold of 5,000 people. It's not required to switch to home charter. You could stay... Some places stay with local for a little while. But the wording in the staff report seems to say sort of like, "We're doing it." So I guess my question would be, is that what we're doing? Has there already been analysis of the difference between the two and all that kind of stuff? Or will, uh... You know, maybe you can consider informing the citizenry with objective analysis, much of which has already been created by experts. You can look up the papers and things such as pros and cons, capabilities and limitations, real-world comparative analysis of cities making the switch and those not making the switch. There are good case studies, and I hope at least the process elements of those studies will show up in the admin's presentation tonight. And also that there'll be a best effort be made to justify why at this time in MC McLendon Chisholm development, it is necessary to switch. But if it's in our overwhelming interest, we should do it. In case people aren't familiar, home rule permits cities to make laws beyond those permitted by the local rule. The idea, I think, for the local rule was to help the inexperienced cities or maybe their staff by setting boundaries on what they can and cannot do. But no well-represented government's gonna try to hurt its citizens, but poor judgments can be made. And that's been visible. That's it. 6.7, citywide communications cloud-based texting. I hadn't heard about this. Maybe it's come up before. It's one piece of software that you're focused on, so I'm wondering if the staff report had other packages. They looked at what was the comparative analysis and do we understand the interfaces required? Are the interfaces standardized or proprietary? Also, how is this different than using the Rockwell Emergency Management System? For instance, I subscribe to this free service and receive critical weather, traffic, incident, and other emergency messages. Perhaps there's an interface for you guys to put in special things like water breaks, water line breaks, and valve shut-offs, you know, stuff we need to know, and just be part of that system that already exists. The non-agenda thing had to do with the comprehensive plan, short-term action items. There are actually 33 of those. Short-term is defined as anything that can be implemented within three years from the publication of the comprehensive plan. And on page 67 is where the table starts. It has short-term, medium-term, and long-term. We're a little more than halfway to that term for short, and so I'm wondering if any of those 33 action items has been done, and if we will be able to see what you guys came up with. I figure there might be some that are already done. The planned and controlled development category. There are five short... You know, four of the five action items are short-term, and we're doing a lot of that sort of stuff right now, so... I was wondering if there's anything on that done. That's it.
Thank you, David. Alright, there's no other point. Citizens' comments are closer to evening. Alright, moving on to consent agenda 5.1, 5.2, 5, and 5.3. Councilors, are there anything on there that you may want to remove from the consent agenda?
Yes, sir, Mayor. I would like to take off the 5.3 for the RCH water system. I think that needs to go to the next... Next items under consideration for the new council.
Okay, so we wanna do that tonight, or we want to...
Just need to take it out of the consent agenda, but move it to the regular.
Michael, we're good with doing that, moving it from there to the... Under the 6s?
I'll second the motion.
Alright. I've got a motion. I've got a second. Any discussion? If not, all in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Show that unanimous? Alright. Consent agenda 5.1 and 5.2, that's the meeting minutes from April 11th and April 19th. I'll entertain a motion if this does ask, as they're written.
Make a motion to approve 5.1, 5.2 on the consent agenda, as written.
Alright, do I have a second?
I'll second.
I've got a second. Is there any discussion? If not, all in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Show that unanimous? Alright. Now, we will move on to item 6.1, discussion and action regarding a resolution canvassing the returns of the general and special elections held on May 6th for the purpose of electing three council members, places 1, 3, and 5, to serve two-year terms in canvassing the returns of the special election for... To elect one council member to fill the one-year unexpired term for place 4. Ms. Trudy and Ms. Lorna are gonna be canvassing the vote, so... You two were up.
What are we supposed to do? Oh, okay.
Alright, according to Christopher Lynch, the undersigned elections administrator of Rockwell County, certified that he has made the check and comparison of all the ballots tabulated, has voted with return sheets, and the unused ballots as recorded on the register of official ballots. I therefore make the following findings from the May 6, 2023 election that was held in Rockwell County. I hereby certify the results to be full, true, and correct tabulation, audit, and count. So, we have... For the city of McLendon Chisholm, Jennifer Hoffman, place number 1, total of 435 votes. Is that what I'm supposed to do? Okay. For city council, place number 3, city of McLendon Chisholm, Floyd McLendon Jr., total of 437 votes. For city council, place number 5, city of McLendon Chisholm, Dan Tucker, 299 votes, Bob Steinhagen, 219 votes. For city council, place 4, unexpired city of McLendon Chisholm, Adrian Balkum, 411 votes.
Do I need to read both of these resolutions? At the very top? Okay. Alright, the very first resolution, 2023-04. A resolution of the city council of the city of McLendon Chisholm, Texas, canvassing the election returns and declaring election results in the general election held in the city of McLendon Chisholm on May 6, 2023 for the purpose of electing three council members for places 1, 3, and 5 for a term of two years each, providing a severability clause and providing an effective date. And that was for Jennifer Hoffman, Floyd McLendon, and Dan Tucker. The second resolution, which is 2023-05, a resolution of the city council... The city council of the city of McLendon Chisholm canvassing the election returns and declaring election results in the special election held in the city of McLendon Chisholm on May 6, 2023 for the purpose of electing one council member for place 4 for a term of one year, providing a severability clause and providing an effective date. And that is for place 4 for Adrian Balkum. Alright. Do we need to do a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the resolutions canvassing the returns of the general and special elections held on May 6th, as described previously.
Do I have a second? Any discussion? If not, all in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Show that unanimous? Alright, now, moving to 6.2. And folks, as we move into this, this is gonna be the swearing-in of the new council members. I have no problem with people coming up, as long as you don't get right in the middle of them being sworn in. This is a... And I'm aging myself. This is a Kodak moment. It's picture time, so if you need to come in here, this is a special moment for each of these individuals. Feel free to get up there to take pictures. Alright, we'll start with place 1. I'm gonna have the judge do all three that you're swearing in because he knows how to really go. Like, yeah. Oh! Now, Dan, you have to give us a favor. Who are all of his family members? No. Thank you for being here. Some cities out there will give some sort of a small financial stipends to their council members and their mayor. We don't do anything like this. So each and every person that stands up and puts their name in the hat to be in one of these positions does this at their own expense. I'm very proud of them. When we have people that decide they wanna take a break or they wanna get off council, I'm very appreciative of the time and the effort that they've put in because they do a lot on their own time and on their own... I'm very proud of the council that is seated tonight. Every one of them are very good people. They all had a very clean race in this. We've seen times here in McLendon Chisholm, and we've seen it, you know, elsewhere in elections where there's a lot of mudslinging and a lot of dirty tactics towards the person somebody's running against. Very proud of every one of these folks up here because they were clean, they were honest, and they didn't lower themselves to those kind of things. They all deserve a round of applause for that. I'm very proud of them. And did I mention it's Dan's birthday? I'm gonna keep reminding him a few times tonight. Alright, let me get back... All right, let me get back to where we're at. Before we go further into the, uh, well, let's do one more thing. Uh, discussion and a vote to appoint a mayor pro temp. I'll look for a motion to appoint somebody for mayor pro temp in accordance with twenty-two point oh seven B of the Texas Local Government Code.
Mayor, I'd like to nominate Dan Tucker for mayor pro temp position. Being that he's got, he's been here for a while, he's got the experience. I think he's do something to show his leadership.
Okay, I've got a nomination. We have to do a second on those? We do this every year. Okay, do I have a second on that? Going once, going twice. Can he second for himself? Okay. All right, I've got a second. It's now open for discussion. If there's not any discussion, then you have a choice to either all, you can either say aye for being in favor of it and then I will call for those opposed. All in favor, aye. I've got two. All opposed, nay.
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 Okay. So that, that motion dies, all right? I'll open any other motions.
I make a motion to nominate Adrian Walkham.
Okay, I've got a motion. Do I have a second?
I'd like to second that.
Okay, I've got a motion and a second. Again, I will call for, for a vote for and then against. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Okay, that's. Four, four, and one against. Yes. All right. Again, congratulations, Adrian. We're now mayor pro temp for the city of McLennan Chism. Yes, ma'am. All right, now, we'll move back up to the one agenda item that was taken off the consent agenda, which was five point three confidentiality, confidentiality agreement requested by RCH Water Systems for technical, fiscal, administrative, and overall review of the entire RCH water system by the city of McLennan Chism.
Okay, thank you, mayor, members of the council. This was originally on the consent calendar because at the last city council meeting, the, the council reviewed this and decided to have our water attorney review it as well, which she had not done prior to. Um, we sent it to the water attorney and she's reviewed it and it's in, it's in red. I, I, I didn't clean up the copy. I left it so you could see very minor, um, changes, hardly anything. So you can look in there and see where the red is. That's what the, the, one misspelling or, 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 it wasn't a misspelling. It was just the word was changed probably by the computer. Um, and then one section she changed a little bit, but it was, in my mind, not, not a major issue. So, um, the blue, we passed it by, um, the board member, which there's just various, a couple of words in the blue, whereas RCH's input, at least the board, board president's input. I'm not sure if it was the whole board, but, um, those changes were not, not major. So it's something that you've seen and reviewed in the past. Um, and if you remember, it was, it was a requirement that RCH ask of the city to allow us to go and send our technical review into the RCH system to look at the operation, the system operations, as well as the fiscal and administrative. So this fulfills that requirement if you approve this.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion on that.
And to approve the confidentiality agreement between the city of McLennan Chism and RCH Water.
Hey, I've got a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, you've got a motion and a second. It's now open for discussion.
So my understanding then is that we're ready to go on this, that it's been looked at by our esteemed lawyer, Mr. Hala, and, and folks over at RCH and they're in compliance with this or they, they have an understanding that this is what they want. So I don't see if there's, if there's a problem. Board on us.
Yeah, and, I mean, our esteemed city attorney was the author of this. And then you wanted our water attorney, which she pretty much just stamped what he did as a great job. Just a tiny little change. So we've had two attorneys look at it and have sent it over to RCH for their review. As I've mentioned, their review is in blue, which is hard to read.
Is there anything else that you want to add, Mr. Tucker?
Anything else you want to add?
No.
As mentioned by our city administrator, that the, um, RCH president was the one that added the item in blue. Uh, this item, I believe that we need to have further discussion with our water attorney. I personally have not spoken directly with our water attorney. I believe that everyone in the city council would probably, would like to spend some time discussing that with her, um, as well as other issues that may be concerning. And plus, there's also a few more meetings that, uh, will be taking place very soon in regard to RCH. So I believe that we need to properly, um, just wait a little bit to, to get through those meetings first, just to be, just to be on.
I know the motion is to approve, so it will be either a yes to approve or a nay to oppose, unless you want to amend your motion to table it until after we've had those discussions.
I would prefer to take a vote on it.
Okay. All right. If there's no further discussion, all in favor, aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay.
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 Okay, that's one, four, and four against. All right, um, I'll entertain a motion to favor this until. I know, um.
Um, there was a lot of stuff going on with the water, so we may just go and wait till we get, as Councilmember Walkham said, excuse me, Mayor Pro Temp said, get all of that done at once. And then, then we can decide, hey, we're gonna put it on this agenda for this day.
So since it died, we don't have to do anything else.
Correct. If there's nothing else, we just move on to the next.
Just want to make sure. All right. Well, then show that one that has died for the vote. All right. Um, next thing up is six point four, update citywide maps, ETJ, and city boundaries. Conrad?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. As you know, as, as the city annexes additional property into the city, it's required by law to update our maps. Recently, the council, um, annexed some trilogy property, uh, just the last city council meeting, I believe. Um, and so that's required. We also, as of February, um, have, have gone over five thousand population. Um, we currently have five thousand three hundred and eighty-eight, um, persons in the city, which allows us to expand our ETJ, our extraterritorial jurisdiction, from a half mile to a mile. So this is, this allows us to do that. I, I also put on the staff report of, of the acre, the four thousand acres that, um, in the past, the city, I don't know, abandoned or how they officially got rid of it, but it's out there and, and I didn't want to include that unless you're aware of it and you know that, um, it's, it's, it's land that we can include in our one acre. We can go everywhere to one acre in our ETJ, except for if there's a city, um, that either has their, their boundaries up next to us or their ETJ against us. But if it's just county, um, we can claim it into our ETJ. And that's what we'd like to do and update our maps. Um, we have a small fiscal impact. Um, most of the, the nicer maps were done by Kimberly Horn and they mount them and we can, so that's, that's the monetary part of it, is just having them print out the maps and mount it.
Do we know just a rough estimate what that cost is, just to update them? I mean, we have to update them, I get that, but just to, just to.
It, it depends on how many maps you want to see. I mean, if you want all of our maps, that's why I put the three thousand. It may not be that much.
Okay.
Um, but, um, I'd rather, I, I was telling a little bit more than less, so.
Absolutely. All right, guys, um. It's an update on that, so we don't need to take a motion or anything on that, correct? Does everybody understand? I'm gonna do things just a tad different on this one, um, for our audience. Because our city, from a population standpoint, is now over five thousand, it changes, so you understand a little bit about, um, how things work. Prior to population of five thousand, we only could expand out a half mile of ETJ or what is known as extraterritorial jurisdiction, which is the unincorporated part that falls just outside our city limits, that we do have some, some limited controls on things that go there, go on there. Once we went over the five thousand population threshold, for lack of a better explanation, it now gives us the ability to expand that out to one mile, which, um, what Conrad was trying to explain, or what Conrad did explain, was the four thousand or forty-four hundred acres that was originally given away many years ago, a very large portion of that falls right back into our ETJ now that we are in that one mile ETJ, which gives us back a lot of property within our ETJ. And I think that's a very good thing for our city. Just so you understand what that discussion was with the update of the maps and ETJ and boundaries. All right, moving on to six point five, citywide solid waste and recycling outside procurement assistance. What?
Thank you, mayor, members of the council. The city council in the past has issued an interest in, in going out to bid, um, for our solid waste and recycling provider, um, that is currently CDW. Um, and, and it's required in our contract. We're ending a five-year contract, um, that we give notice to them that we're gonna go out to bid within six months at the end of the contract. The contract ends December thirty-first of this year. So that's sort of the, you may think, why, we're way far ahead of, of that, why now? Well, we have to give that at least six months. And then if there is any transition, you can, after receiving the bids, if CW, CDW, um, apply, bids on it, you can select them again. Maybe they sharpen their pencil and, and they're your preferred provider. Does not preclude them from continuing on if you select them. This is just putting out to bid, seeing what's out there, um, and have other people bid. So going to the bids, um, it is, it is of a very technical nature. We've just, we've just gone through a process where, where, um, the city was, was actually, um, litigated based on small, little, minor errors. This type of bid procurement and the amount of money that's involved over a five-year period, um, is substantial. So, um, these guys are professional. They've done multiple cities, I mean, a, a whole list of cities. And, and, um, so it, we would shift our, if there is any liability to them for helping us there. The cost, um, that was mentioned earlier, um, is something that this company puts on as a rider in the bid package that says the successful bidder will reimburse the city for all costs that it uses for, for going through this process. So virtually, the cost is zero to the city, um, and, and the successful bidder will pay us. I'm saying that, but we're giving them a, a short-term loan. So there's that six-month period and whenever the city decides, which needs to be pretty soon, just based on the transition, if there's a new provider, to do all the things necessary to, to provide the solid waste services. If you stay with CDW, there won't be a, a big transition, but they will have to pay the cost, um, of the procurement. So that's what that is. So in essence, there's no cost to the city and that will be a, one of the items on the bid package. So that's what's before you now, um, to decide if that's what you want to do. If you want to go out to bid, if you don't, I mean, it's moot now. But if you want to go out and bid, um, it's the end of the five-year, five-year period for CDW. If we don't notify them within six months, it automatically rolls over to another five years. So we can have them for another five years automatically if we don't notice them, um, soon.
Here's, here's my question for you on this. If we were to agree to this thirty thousand dollar cost, I get the reimbursement side of it. But if we put it out for bids and nobody responds, we're still out thirty thousand dollars, right?
No, because we'll give notice to CDW that we're closing out their bid package and we want them to bid again. And if they're the, if they're the, the parent low bidder and, and who we select, that you all select, they will have to pay that.
Okay. And then my second half to that, and I know you can't answer this because you're not, you're not in the business of being a, a trash company or, or, you know, waste company. But if that's in there and they end up getting the contract again, there's the potential that thirty thousand dollars is going to be borne by the citizens in an increase in, in monthly fees or maybe maybe three months. I guess is how they bill us now. And I'm a little concerned about that being passed on to our citizens.
That, that is definite, good and valid concern. Um, that's how they get money.
No, I, I get it.
But, but at the same time, you're gonna be evaluating, um, those packages. And if the price goes up, you may want, I mean, you may base it on price alone and, and say, no, we don't want this. So it depends on how many people bid. I mean, the competitiveness of the bid.
Adrian, I, because you and I, you know, in council, you brought two of these. I'm gonna refer to you with a little bit more expertise on that because we did the bid process. And what are your feelings on how we did the process?
Well, it was, uh, first off, we, we had a lot of response. We had a lot of response when we put out the RFQs and, um, we gave like a deadline. And I mean, I, we had a pretty hefty stack of binders to go through. And so each one of us kind of had like a little bit of a matrix system to say, like, you know, what are concerns, where were price and, um, you know, the, the polycarts, things of that nature. Things that were really facing our community because at the time, we had a previous contractor who had, um, a, um, it wasn't even a polycart that was fighting, so all sorts of trash was flowing everywhere. So we wanted to make sure to have that contained. And, uh, so I think that we did it pretty well. There was a lot of, uh, present, good presentations. Um, I think that we probably should pull from the council members, what are you hearing as concerns? Is it a price issue? You know, do we even have that option with this particular contractor? Are they willing to take in our, our, uh, issues with, possibly right now with CWD?
Yes, ma'am. Without, without a doubt, they will, they will come in and they will ask all of your concerns. What do you want enclosed in this bid package? And so all of your concerns that you think are, should be in the bid package, will be in the bid package. The difference is, they'll do the matrix, they'll do all the stuff and bring it back and, and show it to, to the council.
Well, guys, it's, I don't get a vote in this unless there's a tie, unless there's a tie. And I have enough council members up here, I don't know that there'll be a tie, but as the mayor, I just, even though it may be money put out and money reimbursed, my concern is the pass-through of the cost to the citizens. I, you know, I'm, and I'm speaking as a citizen at this point, having trash service within our city. I've watched the costs increase, but I've also seen the service level diminish off and on throughout the whole time. And that's, that's a concern with me is, you know, the level of service and we're, we are gonna potentially pass off a thirty thousand dollar cost to, to the folks out there, you know, with whoever gets that bid, and that's a concern.
Um, just quickly, if I, if CWD did, if we did the thirty thousand and CWD took it, they would still have to come give us a presentation, correct? For us to look at, um, like if they were gonna increase a rate or do something, wouldn't they have to present us that package and we would be able to say, eh, yeah or nay? Or do them as a business get to just say, oh, we're gonna raise it four dollars per customer?
No, if, if, if the price per can is, is very important to the council, which I would imagine it will be, we'll ask them, we'll ask every provider that bids to give us that price per can. We can say guaranteed for X amount of year. The council can say what you want to say in your bid package, then the companies can decide whether they want to bid or not. Then the companies can decide whether they want to bid or not.
Well, I'm only bringing it up just to, because I understand exactly what the mayor's saying, to protect the citizens, to make sure that they don't get the cost passed on to them, because I would be in that same concern. But if we as a city council can be the roadblock against that, would it benefit us? I guess is what I'm trying to get at. And I don't know that answer. I'm just, that's what I'm trying to find out.
I think I understand what you're asking, Brian. And I think the situation is the cost is going to get passed on in some way, some point.
Right.
We all know that. It's whether or not we as the council want to take and do the RFQs that we did before, and then we review them and make the decision. And when we review them, whoever we bring in to discuss who we decide on, we can set those parameters of what we want.
And that would be with anybody, right? So like if JW disposal wanted the bid, we would still want to make sure that we're protecting that cost to go on to citizens.
We can tell them this is what we want.
So then I guess our main concern right now on the 30,000 is, do we want to, like, kind of like, do we want to just not outsource it and let CWD still keep us?
Well, we can still put bids out.
Without doing the, on our own?
And save the $30,000 and save the potential cost to the citizens.
Because that's what you were referring with Adrian. Okay.
But Councilmember McNeil, all those questions that you've asked are things that you can tell, you can say, I want this included in the big package. I don't want an increase in costs for our residents. I want to see a decrease in the cost per can for our residents. Whatever, I mean, all those things. And some of these providers, I mean, I'm sure there may be providers that are one-city shops. CWD has like 35 different cities that they go to. $30,000 to us is, we count every penny, every dime. To them, obviously, 30,000 is 30,000. But it's, on some of these companies, I mean, it's, they'd rather bid and get the bid over five years. They'll make up the cost easy in that time. So, and you can put a guarantee. Look, we don't want prices to raise for the first two years, the first three years, or whatever. I mean, all those things can be put in to potentially offset that cost. Every concern that you may have, you'll be able to have that part of the bid package, or you all. Individually, I think it should be more of the council, a majority vote. We want this, and this, and this, and this. And they'll all be in the bid package.
I agree with the mayor. I just want to make sure that we protect the citizens of not taking on any cost at all because we decided to, as a council, to say, hey, we're going to spend 30,000 to go find somebody new. And if they did it before on our own, I mean, it kind of seems like, keep the 30 grand, like you said, 30,000 is 30,000, keep the 30,000. And then if there's a way, we can figure out how to go and get those bids out. Yeah, yeah, I mean, if we save that 30,000, I'll take it.
Right. It's all valid, it's valid what you're saying, without a doubt. However, it takes one guy that makes a call to him next to me, and that 30,000 has gone real quick, even if we're 100% right.
Yeah, but you're constantly, I mean, you're always under the threat
Always under the threat.
Of legal action, no matter what we do. And so, you know, that's kind of a red herring, as far as I'm concerned. You know, it's what we want to do here, what we feel comfortable here. And at this point, what I'm hearing is that $30,000 is a large outweigh for a process that I think we're certainly capable of performing ourselves. I mean, between three or four of us, I think we could sit down and analyze and put this together. It's, I just don't see the justification for the 30,000, especially with the threat of legal action. That's the last resort that I would consider. So I would be in alignment with the rest of the panel here.
I have a question. So what is it about Burns and McDonald that makes them so special?
Oh, I don't know if there's only a handful of people. And we can look and open it up and seek out lower prices. They're just people that have done it. The city of Prosper is currently going through it. The city of Rowlett has just finished and used those. Other cities have used other firms. We have solid waste specialists that also does it, that they've been in the industry for, I mean, their principals have been in the industry for 25 years. And they're just trying to help out cities when potentially they don't have the staff, the bandwidth, if you will, to put together everything like that and protect yourself, so.
Is the $30,000 based on the population of 5,000?
I don't know how they created the cost.
She mentioned that it was the 30,000 population up there in Prosper. And so I don't know if it's an equivalent.
I don't think it's based on population, but because the bid will look pretty much the same, no matter what size city.
So a quick question, and I may have missed this at some point, but did Burns and McDonald, did they approach the city? Or did someone on the city council, or was it administration that sought them out?
No, as the council expressed interest in potentially going out to bid, I sought out different cities and what they do. I mean, both virtually, I mean, a lot of the cities have full-fledged purchasing officers, procurement people, I mean, a handful of people. And they still go out to bid and get these guys. So I just went out and found out who was currently doing it, who they went through, if they went through somebody. Is there, can we do it in-house? Of course we can do it in-house. But it's, to cross all the Ts and dot all the Is, it's just, I mean, especially if it costs nothing, potentially future increase, I guess, that's major discussion.
Is the five-year a standard in the industry when it comes to waste management?
Five years is pretty standard because they have to provide the cans, they have to, and that's another thing you can talk about in the process, who owns the cans at the end. But they put in some substantial investment into the city, and they try to get that money back. I mean, they're in a for-profit business. And so five years is pretty standard for contracts to start out. And they're rolling over for an additional five years. But that's, again, something that can be negotiated by the city.
I have two questions. I have two questions for you. First off, what is our timeframe before they roll over?
Six months, which I believe, at first I thought it was made--
Towards the end of this year?
Well, the end of our contract with CWD is December 31st.
Of this year?
This year, 2023. So I did my quick math and said May 31st. It's really June 30th. But that's really pressing the date. I didn't want to be, instead of changing it to June 30th, let's--
And that's fine, I get that. The second question is, and you may not be able to answer it to an exact number, but roughly right now, how many households within McLennan-Chisholm is CWD serving? Because I know our population is over 5,000, but that doesn't mean we have 5,000 trash cans.
She said the list that, because she just recently sent out something for the commissions and stuff to all the residents. And they get a list, she got a list of 1,300 plus.
Does that help answer some questions? I just, I'm finding it hard to palate 30,000. I mean, I think we are capable of putting the correct information together on a bid and then looking at the bids. And if we decide that, maybe it's not working, we can always go on and address it. But Conrad, in the meantime, I would also like you to find out if there are any other companies that do that kind of work at a cheaper rate. $30,000 awful, awful hard to palate.
Right, I went through, I don't know, probably 15 or 20 metroplex cities that I asked, that I knew, people that worked there, city managers or assistant city managers. And then outside the area, plus outside the state, to probably three or four states. And that's where I got my information. But definitely, we can go look. And definitely, we could, if there's a price that the council thinks is more amenable, we could go back and say, look, this is all we're going to pay for this, if you want to do that. Or you're, and they could just say, no.
I don't, you know, this particular thing on the agenda isn't really up for a motion. But with the council's approval, I'd like you to bring us back that additional information. And we'll readdress it in the next, one of the next couple of upcoming council meetings, since we have just a little bit of time, and make a decision at that point. Because we've got other things, I think, with the timeframe we have before we have to make a decision on trash service. We've got other more pressing issues such as water and things associated with water for our citizens that are a little more pressing right now, even though we do have concerns over waste management.
So what I'm understanding is you want me to go and find out if there are other providers that do this.
Or cheaper costs as well. And then we'll make a decision whether we're going to do that
Bring it back to the next one or two city councils.
With the way we've done it in the past.
Yes, sir.
Is council okay with that?
I agree.
All right, we've got direction on that. 6.6, discussion and consider the process for the city of McLennan-Chisholm to adopt a home rule charter in accordance with Chapter 9 of the Texas Local Government Code.
Okay, thank you, Mayor, and members of the council. I'm going to put our city attorney on notice because he has this local government code just in the back of his head with the specific numbers. But how this starts is a city gets 5,000 population. That's the threshold to become a home rule city. Home rule city, real basic, is the city's ability to leave the state of Texas and the requirements that they require in the Class A, Class B cities, and create their own charter. There's a handful of things that the state, that we have to always follow state law. But this gives us some autonomy as a city to run our city how McLennan-Chisholm should be run. I would guess right now that it's not going to be dramatic from what other cities have done. You go-- Well, I was, yeah, tell them in a second, let me just tell them. To even start the process, you have to have a, all right, forget that. He's grimacing. I'll let him go through the legal requirements in a second. But let me tell you one last thing, that of the cities that are 5,000 above, over 90% have chosen to become charter cities, become home rule cities, and rule their city how they want to rule their city. You can always amend it. I think you're even required to look at, to reevaluate it over by state law after a certain amount of years. So that's just what everybody else is doing. And then our city attorney is going to tell you some more specific stuff. Michael?
It's green.
Now it's on.
Okay. Please tell the one I did press the button. All right. So it all falls under 9.02 of the local government code. Lays out the process for home rule charter. The big difference between a home rule city and a Type A general city is what we are. It's, the quick answer you put on the bumper sticker is a home rule city can do anything they want to do unless the law says you can't do that specifically. Whereas a general law city can't do anything unless the law specifically says that they can. There's also a corollary, for example, if you create a police department, it's general city, it's specifically authorized it can do that, okay? Well, also, it doesn't say. But a corollary of that is getting officers, getting a police chief, getting guns, police cars, things like that to go along with the police department. So the corollaries are fine. The, one of the first things that we need to do, if we're even going to think about it, is we'd adopt a resolution, and there's no specific statutory area where you've got to use this, this, or this. But some sort of identifiable, like a census or something like that, that shows that the city has over 5,000 people. And it's just a simple resolution. It would be hereby resolved by city council, City McLennan, Texas, that the city has looked at whatever the census or these records, whatever records you want to look at, and we are over 5,000 people. And so that's pretty much it. So once you do that, then, as Conrad was saying, that you can go down and say, hey, well, we got to have a charter commission. Got to have that. The law specifically requires that, it's got to be 15 people. Now, there's four ways you can do that. It's going to be up to y'all. You can have it pass an audit, have an election, let the people choose them. The mayor can choose them on his own. The city council can choose them on their own. Or ironically, I never really understood, sometimes the law makes sense, sometimes it doesn't, or it says the people can choose them in an election. Well, all can be done in a mass meeting. And that's actually the words from the statute, quote-unquote, mass meeting. Doesn't really sound pleasant to me, but that's what it is. So they'll create a draft of the charter. And this typically generally normally takes a good, probably around 10 months or so, okay? Because you got to go through revisions, you got to see what you, and there's different revisions. Do we incorporate this, do we incorporate that, how are we going to do this, how are we going to do that? Then, at the next uniform election date, and there's some 30-day guidelines and this, that, and whatnot that you have to comply with, but not really relevant for our purposes. But you'll have to submit it to the voting public for their decision at the uniform election. So technically, I guess, you could do it. If you don't get around to doing it until the middle of next summer, you could do it in November or something like that. So it's a uniform election. At that point, it's a very simple thing. The citizens either vote, say yes, we got the charter, no, we don't want the charter. And it will be adopted as is. It won't be, we adopt it, like a lot of times, we'll go, hey, you know, I'll make a motion to approve XYZ, some provisions, or that change. There won't be any of that. There will just be, they adopt it or they don't adopt it. So that's, as you can tell, that's one reason why it would take somewhere around 10 months to do it, because you're going to have public hearings, you're going to have people, what provisions do you like, what you don't like. And another little tidbit that hit some cities hard, you have to send out a copy of the proposed charter to every single registered voter prior to the election. So you go like, add to mail, so that day, ah, amazing. It doesn't have to be certified mail, thank goodness, but charters aren't going to be 54, I don't know, what does Biden have stamps, a $1,000 stamp or something like that, whatever it is now. You just regular stamp, send it out, you're good to go. So there's a few things, and as you can tell, that's a lot of prep work. Obviously, y'all as the councils, since y'all will be ordering it, y'all will ultimately be the ones that kind of pre-approve the draft of the charter. And so the election date is when, and it's going to be, and you can do it at the same time the council elections are. So that can happen, you know, everything, it'll all be done at one time. And so it's a, it is a bit of an arduous process because it's detailed, you don't want to go through it now. You want to, you probably need a bit, someone who's a bit standard and didactic in looking at things. Maybe you have a very good person on council to do stuff like that. But it's a meticulous process. But it will, like, I think, I remember we were talking about earlier, extend our ETJ, the boundaries, that is true. ETJ is, it's a basic statute. 42.021 has a list of where everyone's, if you're this side, that's this, that's that, it's this side, that's a mile, et cetera, et cetera. So as soon as the charter is adopted, it will become home rule, then boom, our ETJ, it's not going to cross over, it can slide in anyone else's ETJ, but whatever parts of the ETJ that are not in someone else's ETJ, now that becomes our charter. No. No, no, as soon as we become home rule, that'll be, yeah, that's-- So Conrad is pointing at, this is why he's an excellent city administrator, but I wouldn't hire him to do my little work. So he's pointing at petition for 10% of the voters. There's two ways that you can get in front of voters. He's, that's only one of the two ways. One is the council can decide to do it. Go pass an audit, the lady's got to be two-thirds of the council, and it's effectively 4.5. So you can have that sent to the, or if you get petitioned from 10% of the voters, registered voters, then it's going to go on election to adopt and appoint charter commission. So that is also the significance of the resolution to, and we would have to find some sort of, you know, objective record or whatever for, that our population is now over 5,000. And again, there's nothing, yeah, there's no magic number, there's no, well, we can't use this, but we can use that, we have to use that. And again, there's nothing, there's, yeah, there's no magic number, there's no, well, we can't use this, but we can use that, we have to use this, there's, there's none of that. So it's a little bit more, uh, open, but there does need to be a resolution adopting and resolving that we gotta do.
And, and another thing that, that our city attorney mentioned, that there has to be fifteen members on this charter commission. Um, through talking with and, and participating in one home rule city charter, and, and talking with others that have gone through it, um, a, a, the, sort of the consensus of those that I talked to is that the mayor and council each select two members, and a five-member council, um, that's twelve. The mayor appoints two council members to sit on it, that's fourteen, and having the city administrator or a staff member to sit on it, that's fifteen. It makes it a very fair amongst the council to have their two people, but you can do it, as he said, in those four ways. Um, you can go to an election and get it, or bring everybody in and, to do that, so... But it's if you wanna continue down the path, again, are you interested in continuing down this path? If so, we need to know, we'll get that resolution in front of you, and we can start marking off the steps to, to move forward with that.
Thank you. This is discussion and...
This discussion and consider the process.
Council, at this point, do you want to sit and think about it and do some of your homework on the pros and cons of it before we go to the next step? Or do you want to give direction to starting the process?
Uh, in my, I believe that, that's a, that's, that's a lot, thank you for, just a brief moment of, of sharing. I, I'm sure you could, but, um, you know, obviously, this is our first council meeting together. Um, I, I, one of the things I, I think that we should tackle is, like, we need to learn what are the benefits. Okay? And the second thing is, uh, I think we kinda need to lay out visually what, what we just got through talking about. And, um, I know that we have some workshops coming up this summer, so maybe we can take some time out, and I know we're gonna have you come to one of the meetings, and maybe we can kinda just go through, um, you know, sharing a little bit more in depth, like what are the pros and cons, I think that was brought up by one of the, uh, citizens earlier, and just really understanding what this is all about. Because I don't know if you're familiar with other cities, but to my understanding, anytime we make changes to the charter, or we want to make a change to a charter, it has to go on the election ballot. Okay? And so, every time we have an election, it costs about ten or twelve thousand dollars, just in general, and then whatever that item adds another thousand dollars. So, um, I, did, did you even just share that with the council at some point earlier, or did I, did I miss that?
Uh, which, which part?
About the cost about the election, like anytime we have an amendment change, or if we wanna have proposition or anything changed with the charter, it would have to get back on, uh, it has to be on the election ballot, and that costs something, too.
Oh, no, I, I didn't mention it, but that's what I'm saying, I could've said a whole lot more than, than I was, but of course, you always make what I say better.
So I just think that, in my, in my opinion, I think that we could probably, uh, bring back staff, or especially, uh, Michael Hollis, to share at one of our workshops. I know that we have one on Thursday, uh, so maybe we can start talking about having him.
If, if he can talk five minutes or less, it's, that's a budget visioning workshop. Unless you wanna go later in the day, I mean, we can go as long as you want.
For, for this item, guys, with, with council's blessing, we need more of what the pros and the cons are of doing it, how it truly benefits our city. And like Adrian was saying, um, some more visual to go with it as well, maybe, I don't know if a PowerPoint's appropriate for it, but, um, more visuals so that they can understand a lot more what our pros are, as well as what cons they're making.
You know, I think that in the interim, because it's, it's, it's a big process, it seems like to me, in the interim, before we even get to that point, is we individually can start looking into this. Because it's, it's, it's a serious issue that we need to, to look at and contend with, and so we've got...
Each of you can do your homework.
Independently, we can do this.
While they're doing their...
Absolutely.
Absolutely. Sounds good with that?
Would it hurt to do a census? Um, just to confirm that we even have, just, I mean, so the fifty-three hundred that we, the number that we have, is that accurate?
Okay, the factor is, as the city attorney mentioned, there can be a variety of different things, you can use water, water, um, accounts, you can use the census plus the water accounts, you can use building permits. Um, what we used was, was the E nine-one-one system, the number of addresses that are here in our city, thinking that, you know what? Who knows better than how many houses are sitting in our city than the E nine-one-one? They gave us the number of E nine-one-one accounts in the city of McLennan Chisholm and the ETJ, um, they have all, every house. I mean, when they're sending the police or fire EMS, that's what we do, and we took that off. Then we took the latest census, the twenty-twenty census, that had us at three persons per household. In the twenty-ten census, I believe it was three point two, so we got a little older, um, between twenty-ten and twenty-twenty, or twenty-ten and twenty-twenty, but it had us three persons per households. We simply times the number of households, um, times the three, and got our number. That's how it was done, it's as simple as that, so...
And just to, just to piggyback off that, that's, that is normal to use those type of, of ways of finding it, and, uh, based on that, plus the current houses that have been building occupied almost on a weekly basis, we are closer to fifty hundred as a population. So, you know, simple math is, we're knocking on the door of the N six thousand. Just so everybody understands.
Yeah, Mayor, when, when we got those numbers, they included the heritage subdivision that recently got opened, the hundred and twenty-nine homes. So we subtracted out those hundred and twenty-nine homes, because even though they've given the addresses to them, they're not built yet. And our, I guess there's a handful that are being built right now, but they weren't occupied or anything, so we're waiting on that.
Now, folks, as he said, they also look at the houses in the ETJ, if you add the numbers in the ETJ, it puts us, um, right at around nine thousand with the ETJ as well. Just, just to give you some, some bits of information out there, so that everybody understands. So I think we're in agreeance, what homework needs to be done to, to bring back the council, and I think the workshop is a perfect place to sit down and discuss it one-on-one.
Just, I, I just threw in the date, it could be any other date, whatever's convenient for Mr. Hollis, I know you have to travel here.
Alright, so are we good on that, guys? We're good on that one? Alright, six-seven, it's gonna be the citywide communication cloud-based texting software, um, Conrad, you wanna explain about that?
Yes, sir. In the public and private sector, the number one, it's, it's been found that the number one communication, um, out there is texting. It's simple, it's easy, and people don't have to, and it comes to everyone's phone, that everybody has a phone, even the twelve-year-olds have phones. Um, so this is a specific company that contacted us, um, probably every other city that they, a, a person who's assigned to our, our, our area. Um, it's called Text My Gov, it's the only, they have no, I said, who are your competitors? And they said, we're the only texting, um, company for the, for the, for government accounts. That's all they do is government accounts, municipal government accounts. Um, can some of these others, can you get with texting companies and, and, and work it with them? Of course you probably could, but they, all they do is specialize in government accounts. Um, the cost is, is extremely minimal, the first year cost is forty-five hundred dollars, which we could find in our existing budget right now, so you wouldn't have to set aside that. And then it's thirty-five hundred annually, that's a little different than what you see there that's at a thousand annually, it's thirty-five hundred. I took the thousand off instead of the, or I took the thirty-five hundred off, because that's the setup cost, it's thirty-five hundred, plus the, plus the thousand for the first year. Um, so this is a, this is a, like I said, a cloud-based software, so it, there's no requirements, technical requirements of what machines we run or anything. It's something that we would have to create a resolution for use, or should create a resolution for use, of how we would want to use this software, how, maybe just the mayor's the only one that can use it, or can, or you have to go to them. I mean, there's, every city have policies of how to use that, or could get out of hand. Um, it's proposed that if we move this direction, that, that instead of, um, buying in, it, it would be a more of a buying out, um, approach, where everybody, put everybody on the software, and they're more than welcome to, to, to get out if they want. Um, they've shown that over and over and over again, that the percentage that you have, um, is a lot higher than trying to get everybody to, to, to join in instead of joining out.
Here's, here's my question for you, Conrad, because Mr. Black brought up a, a good point when, in citizens' comment. I've, I've worked in another city where they, and I may have the wrong name for how that, how it's termed, but it was almost like a reverse nine-one-one system, where if trash got moved, where there was a water line break, or phone lines were down for certain city services, you would get a, basically a text, like you're, you're saying with this program, um, from the city saying, these particular things are happening right now, and then you get an update, say repaired, whatever. Um, I know, because I get them as well as a lot of others, I get the Rockwall County Emergency Management notification. Are we capable of using them for these same type of, of situations?
I can answer that. I can answer that on the Rockwall County Emergency Management one, from the ESC board side. Uh, I can double-check, but I think we can contact them when we have something, and then they can push that out for us. Uh, Roy City just did it the other day, I think Fate did it a week ago. That's what I'm saying, I can, I can ask, we, yeah, I can ask, I mean, we had a board meeting tonight that I had to miss. But, um, I can send a message tomorrow and ask on that, if there is a cost. I don't know if they would wanna do minute things on trash stuff, so if we're wanting to do that, then that would be something separate, but as far as like emergency stuff from what I was reading out here, they'll, they'll, all day, so...
What he's trying to, um, explain is this package here would, with the proper guidelines and, and procedures put in place, gives us the flexibility of the city to push information out to our citizens, or, hey, phone lines are down here today, or, you know, the trash company has contacted us because of the holidays, you live in this neighborhood, your trash picks up on this day versus your original day. And I can see, just looking at it, I think it might give a little cumbersome for emergency management, because truly not what they're, they're trying to...
Yeah, that's what I was saying, I would definitely not wanna go to them for that, I was talking about more emergency side stuff, because I mean, like, I don't ever really worry about if my trash can got moved to the next day. I mean, I should get that alert from them, um, most of the time I do it at least, sometimes.
So this is basically a, a messaging service to your public, is what it is?
Correct.
Yeah, so if you want, if you have a message of some sort, you wanna send out to them, you do that. How many messages would, I mean, have you found in your experience here that you need to put out one, two, three, four messages a week, a day? What's your, I mean, are you being so, uh, inclined to, uh, put, start messaging to people based on, on numbers?
No, that's a great question. Um, that's something that the resident can go online and decide how much they wanna be texted. They can say, I only wanna be texted when, when, when the sky's falling with Chicken Little, or they can say, I only wanna be texted on, I mean, we can put that on our, our, our website, and they can choose that. Uh, and then also, I talked about policies of how much we really wanna send out to not overload people. We can even put links on the text, where they can set, we can send them to specific places in our website, that if we have a, a longer version of what's going on, they can click on that, and, or they can put that link, that URL in, and, and look on our website. So it's something that I would be very surprised if any of these others have, have the capability of polygons, when there's like a, we have valves turned off for a water line break, where you can create your own polygon, and just, just those residents would get the text, nobody else in the city.
Well, you did bring up a point, although with the IT question, and I'm not a computer guy at all, I'm telling you right now, I'm not. Is there a way, if we have our city website, could our IT person, if we post something on our website, would, could it push something out without having, I mean, since we already have it, or is that an impossible thing?
No, we don't, we don't have the capability of doing that. If they would look somehow, I mean, we don't have a way to tell them, look at our website right now, because of weather-related stuff. The biggest emergency management software is Code Red in the United States, they have more Code Red recipients than anywhere else. It's similar to the reverse nine-one-one, but it's city-owned, but this is for anything, this is for community events, this is for whatever the city wants to notify. As we walk into our water, um, issues that we have, great way to let people know what's going on in a split second, um, getting the text out to everybody. So it's, it's something we can, we can go and research and, and look for others, but this is, this is, um, a great price and a great ability to, to go and communicate. And I think the most underserved area, in my opinion, in local government, and probably all of government, is communications with its residents. And this is just one of the tools in the toolbox that you can use.
I, I like it for sure.
To communicate directly with your residents.
Side note, be careful when we say Code Red, I saw Dennis London and the mayor's ears perk. They may get the joke, I don't know.
It's just one of the major code, or...
I said, when you said Code Red, I saw the Dennis London and mayor's ears perk, that's a Marine joke.
Yeah.
Those Marines out there in the audience, they have a big mic.
Not on this one, Mike.
Have you spoken, have you spoken to other cities that have, have utilized this, and gotten any feedback from those guys?
Yeah, well, I mean, like I just said, it's a tool in the toolbox, it's a text. I mean, it's not face-to-face, it's, I mean, right here, you're communicating with residents, which is probably great, I mean, right now, one-on-one is probably the best.
I just wanna try to get a sense of value out of this, and so if you're putting one text out a day, or one text out a week, probably not, not much value there.
Well, it depends on what you're sending.
Yeah.
I mean, if, I mean, if, if there's major issues, and you wanna let people know, one text will mean a huge amount to them, so...
I think we're gonna end up having more questions on this before we can make a decision on it. Because I know in the past, we've asked, excuse me, we've asked people to sign up on stuff on the website to get notifications, which brings me to a question which none of us, I think, can really answer without talking to our IT, um, provider, as to if we've had the ability for people to sign up for certain things, by providing a number or an email address. Um, is there a capability to do that if they provide us a number for texting service, to go do stuff? So that, I think we need to have some, some more questions answered before we make a decision on this.
Okay, we can, we can go get a list of questions, sort of the pros, cons, again, like that. Um, but there is definitely, as I mentioned, for an opt-in, opt-out, um, opting in is, is not as, you don't get as many people as opting out.
I mean, we can request a demo, right? Like, I'm on their website right now.
Absolutely, absolutely. We, we could definitely do that.
If you guys wanna demo in here during the summer?
Yeah, I'd like to see, I'd like to see how it works in, in real time, just to get a better sense of it, I love your descriptions of it, but there are...
See if we can get them in here in June or July.
Okay, as, as Councilmember McLennan was saying, I was writing down presentation on my piece of paper, so...
No, I, I agree, I'm not opposed to it, I'm just trying to weigh our options because of the cost.
Yes, sir.
Alright, um, that ends all the agenda items, now it's updates, discussion, and direction of staff. Brian, do you have anything? I know you get, you and Dan had to miss meetings tonight, um, unfortunately, but, um, do you have anything? Any updates from previous meetings?
No, because we're now meeting every other month, so I already gave a update on that one, but...
Adrian, do you have anything?
Yes, sir, I do. Uh, for... Uh, for, for Memorial Day, we have a remember in honor of our, of our brothers and sisters who, who paid the ultimate sacrifice. It's gonna be May twenty-seventh at eleven-thirty here at, uh, City Council. Uh, I'm sorry, City Hall. City Hall. So that's against Saturday, May twenty-seventh at eleven-thirty, we will do a remember in honor for our fallen brothers and sisters for Memorial Day.
Um, Jennifer, you have anything? Daniel? All right. I don't have anything as far as updates, direction of staff. I think everything that we've discussed here, it, it surfaces for direction and discussion of staff. Nobody else has anything, so it's not going down the line of everybody to see. Um, I will, I will say one thing, obviously, there's several of us that live in Sonoma Verde, um, and I know we have people watching out there. I wanna remind everybody, no matter what subdivision you live in, please, please, pay careful attention to your driving habits. Something's not so important that you need to whip around people at high rates of speed and endanger yourself, them, and others. I, uh, unfortunately had that experience this week, um, on that nice, beautiful straightaway we have at the entrance to Sonoma Verde. And, you know, there's a speed limit sign, it says thirty. I was going a little faster than thirty, I can admit that. The car that passed me blew my doors off, and as I watched them blow my doors off, they did what we call the old California stop. They bumped the brakes and just peeled out onto two-oh-five. Had there been traffic coming, they might not have survived that situation. And there's nothing so important, because obviously, some people are having an emergency situation, you put their flashers on, this person didn't have their flashers on, they were just in a hurry. And, uh, that's not acceptable, guys. I, I value each and every one of you as a human being, not only as citizens of our community. Your life is too precious to make a mistake like that and get yourself or somebody else injured or killed. So let's, let's please kinda remember that in our subdivisions, so that we don't end up having that situation, guys. Making a call, a death scene call for somebody that was killed in an accident is not a fun thing to do. With that being said, and summer's coming on, guys, let me remind you, because we got one more council meeting next week, and I'll reiterate it, summer's coming on, kids are fixing to graduate, prom's been going on, be leery of all these brand-new teenage drivers on the road, and a lot of them will be out there when school's out. So please be conscious of all these people out on the roads. Um, with that being said, the time is eight-oh-two, this meeting is adjourned.